Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting for the traffic authority on August 24th. I'm John Carrington, Director of Public Works and Town Engineer. We'll go around the room just so.
Brian Lefoy, Operations Manager.
Derek Delise, Town Engineer Assistant Director.
Jennifer Kaufman, Director of Planning and Development.
Sherry Bazansky, Public Works Specialist.
Dan Clary, Senior Traffic Engineer with Langen.
Christian Adams, Staff Engineer with Langen.
Tom Cody, Legal Counsel to the Hub at Mansfield Developer.
Andy Savoy, I'm with the applicant core spaces.
Tim's connecting.
Eric, are you there?
Who's on the phone?
I think it might be Eric, but.
The five eight five is probably him.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead. We just got to prove some minutes quick, then we'll get into it. June 27 minutes.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes.
A second.
Any discussion? All favor say hi.
Hi.
Right. Four to zero. Accepted. All right, new business versus the Hub at Mansfield. Can't agree, want to do any introduction before we turn over?
So I'm going to just turn it over to the applicants and I've talked with them. They're going to do a very high level over of the project and then we can get into the traffic issues and then maybe you can review the comments from Weston Sampson and then your responses. I think that's how we should best handle that.
Okay. I'm gonna guess I'm gonna go. From looking at my team here. All right, good morning again. For the record, Dan Clary, Senior Traffic Engineer with Langen. And with me in support is Christian Adams. He did a lot of work on the project and has been coordinating this. And Tim O'Neill's Project Manager, he's here as well. He can jump in with any site plan related questions. Just again, just a basic overview, it's in total 1,187 bedrooms with 450 units and two sites. Christian Site A. Both off of North Eagleville Road. Right next door to the Yukon Public Safety Building. The Site, Site A is on the south side of North Eagleville Road and also connects on to King Hill Road and Site B is on the north side and that is where the former Husky Bar is. And the both sites will be a combination of primarily student housing with some first floor retail. Ancillary retail as part of it. We have done an overall traffic study that looked at both sites and the impact on I think it was six intersections in total that we looked at. The full traffic study has been submitted. The peer reviewer has reviewed it and we have responded to their comments, which I'll go over in a little bit. The site has been designed. Well, let me just break, break down what we've got here is on the Site A, we've got 583 bedrooms on that side of the road. And approximately 215 units. With access onto both North Eagleville and King Hill Road. And then in Site B, there are 604 bedrooms with 200 and approximately 235 units with access out onto North Eagleville. There, we have designed the the accessways into the building in order to accommodate loading and safety requirements. We've looked at both the, both of them from a turning movement perspective for ambulance WB, excuse me, ambulance and garbage truck and a SU 30. Which is a single unit vehicle. They can enter the building and go inside into a designated trash and loading area. The clearances there are, I think it's 16 feet and sufficient for the vehicles to get in and get out. And we've provided the town and obviously the peer reviewer with, with these drawings as well. So they're looking at those. If you want, at this point, I can go over the peer review comments. Do you have those, Christian?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can pull up our comment response.
Do you need to talk about the garbage trucks?
Yeah, and they, they've been coordinating.
Sorry about that. There we go. You have our actual, the one with our, where we answered the letter?
Yeah, yeah, I can pull that up as well.
Just pull that one up.
Okay.
And the committee was given your lessons, tips and comments and your response.
Very good. That was gonna be my next question, whether they had it in front of them or not.
Sent by Sherry the next time.
The, I can start just to the first comment there for the development plan. And going to OSTA, yes, this goes to OSTA and they will review it. We haven't gotten a formal response from them yet. But they, you know, and the project meets the requirements and they will take a look at that. Verify the numbers that we put together in the traffic study. And the next one's about a seal and yes, the final will be sealed and signed by a licensed professional. And as, as I respond to A there and number C, yes, we know it's got to go to OSTA and yes, they will approve the volumes once they've taken a look at it. And the next one is about trip generation, which I know a little bit about because I was involved in the response to this. The what we did here is what he asked for was, you know, while you assume, what he said is you assume that all the trips would be students. So what if some of the units get leased to non-students? How does that affect your trip generation? So what we did, and we've, we've spoken to them about this already. What we did is we simply swapped out the student housing and put in traditional mid-rise apartments. And we, and change the trip generation to that. And then reran the analysis and the long and short of it is there's no difference. The difference is that in the morning, under a mid-rise apartments versus students, there's more traffic during the peak hour. And that's, you know, anybody that knows a college student knows why that's, that's true. You know, that's, it's seven to, it's a seven to nine hour and people are getting up to go to work. And typically with the college students, they, they tend to go a little later. So that's why that, that difference. And then, and in the afternoon, the student trip generation is actually higher than the traditional apartment trip generation. So that actually reduced the number of trips going on to the network. So we did that analysis and effectively there was no qualitative change in anything that we analyzed. And we've discussed that with, with your peer reviewer. And he's looking at it now.
How is the excuse me, second, how is the garage operation going to be? How's that going to work in terms of your residents versus the retail and the restaurants with the on-campus demand for parking in proximity to the core campus? Will it be a paid garage, free garage? How will you kind of monitor that use?
I'm gonna let either Tim or somebody from the architects team to talk about that. Tim?
I can answer that actually. So most of the spaces will, will be rented by the month by the residents. And so in building A, as you turn in off Eagleville, there's going to be one bay of parking that is available for guest parking as well as retail required parking. And then as you start to go up the ramp at the south side of the building A parking deck, there would be an RFID controlled gate there that would then allow monthly, monthly parkers in from that point. And so on Site A, all of the retail required parking and guest parking is in that first row of parking right up against the back of the retail. And then Site B, we'd employ a similar strategy. So there, it would be most, mostly monthly parking available to our residents with some guest parking as soon as you pull into each deck.
Okay, so so really anybody could park in those get community guests first bay of parking realistically and so it's at no charge?
That's correct. And we would control, you know, we would post the appropriate signage saying that it's, you know, for retail only just to make sure that none of our residents actually park there overnight. So we would control that, but any person who's using the retail from the public could pull in and park there.
Or if I have a class.
The biggest concern will be a student wanting to go to class and get some easy parking spot. You know, a short walk away from MSB and all the buildings right there.
I mean, we would have on staff management that could control that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I missed, what was the design turn, turning movement? What was the, the large delivery vehicles you were using?
Or yeah, so we got a garbage, we've got a garbage truck.
Right, understood that.
And we've got a single unit vehicle SU 30 box truck basically. And an ambulance.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about your correspondence with our recycling coordinator? And I know that there were some changes needed in terms of waste management and how you're entering and, and accessing.
Yeah. Tim or Andrew? I'm not sure who talked to them.
I could take that too. Nobody else says. Okay, so we initially, in our initial application, we were assuming a rear-loading trash collection vehicle. And then upon discussions with the actual company, they are phasing those out and going to front-loading vehicles. Front-loading vehicles have a slightly higher clearance required. And I think I'm pretty confident we can still provide that clearance in both buildings. It was just a little unexpected at the time. And so we had a call with the town and with the third-party trash collection company. And we determined that we could, in a worst-case scenario, stage the trash collection bins in the loading area kind of close to the front of each building. And they could actually tip those bins in front of the building, pull, pull all the way out of Eagleville so that they're completely out of the public right, public road. And then tip the bins in front of each building and then they would pull in and do the hammerhead turn similar to how we initially showed it and then exit facing forward into Eagleville Road. And as a worst-case scenario, we could do that. I am pretty confident that we can provide the 16 feet of clearance in both buildings at this point, but at the time that wasn't totally figured out. And, and on building A particularly, it's still not. And we might, you know, we may be a foot short. So as a worst-case scenario, that's, that's what we've have shown in our revised submittal.
That's common.
It is, okay.
Cause, cause they put them in places that weren't ready for these trucks. So that's why he said that they'll, they'll be able to pull in, grab it back up a little bit, do it outside the building and then put it back into the building. And that's, that's not another way now because they, they never made combinations for these trucks because they're new. So it's not. They're not going to redesign a building to be actually. We're still on the comments, right?
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll continue with going through the peer review comments. Question number five was about trip distribution. The distribution for Site A and Site B were slightly different. And in our study because of the access situation with the southern site having access onto King Hill Road. For the purpose of just addressing the comment, we made everything the same and re-analyzed it. And again, no change. So but we did explain that the reason it was different was because of the access situation was slightly different. Six analysis scenario indicates traffic signal timings to be in the future. We went back, re-analyzed it with the existing timings in place and same answer, no change. Site distance diagrams. We, Christian, you can talk to us a little bit, but we revised the or updated the site just stopping site distance and site, you know, approaching site distances to conform with what they're looking for. I will say that we're working on the, it's the north site. We do have some float in exactly where that driveway is going to be located because of the site distance. We're working with the designers to nail that down and make sure that we have the appropriate site distance net location because that the property to our west is wooded and it's the grade, there's a grade change there. And you'd either have to cut into that grade and cut the trees down or you know, there's, there's different things we're looking into, but we're trying to, it's a small difference. We're trying to, to work that out at this moment, but it doesn't really affect the overall design. It's just exactly where the site or exactly where the driveway is going to be.
Other than entrance, right? On the southern, on the southern side?
Yes, yes, sorry. Yep.
How much are you look, what's the distance you guys are seeking to meet those requirements?
The, Christian, you can talk about that a little bit more because you've been working on that.
Yeah. So if we were going the route of not changing the grades at that southwest corner of, of Site A, we would have to move the driveway about 150 feet to the right of King Hill Road. And, you know, we looked at that just concept level to see if the site distances would be, would be appropriate and, and they would be appropriate for both, you know, both directions down King Hill Road. So it'd be about a 50, 150 feet change to the right. If we were to go the route of not changing the grades at that southwest corner.
Do you own the parcel on the southwest corner?
No.
Okay.
There, there is work that can be done within the right-of-way to lessen that distance. But again, you get in, the, it's pretty, the grade there is pretty steep. So you're chasing that. You know, if you start cutting into it. So we're, we're looking at the, you know, less disturbance, less, you know, not having to get involved with the the owner to the, of the Noel there and, you know, but ultimately we'll, we'll work that out and nail that down in the next round of plans.
Can you just pull that up on the, on a plan? Just, I just want to see.
I don't blame her.
Because I think if you go back to and just scroll down on the
You have to wait.
Go back to the site plans there, Christian.
Yeah, I was going to pull up the actual site distance plan that we, we sent back.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the original one that you presented that you submitted. This is the, this is the new one, right?
No, this, this was the original one.
Okay.
And so this is the area of, of the, of the grade change here that's causing a bit of an issue.
Okay.
And that's based on the 25 mile an hour? And what was the percentile?
So we didn't have any speed data available. So we just took five miles an hour over the posted speed limit, which is 20 on King Hill Road. Yeah, there was no speed data available from any DOT database that we could find. There was speed data that we took on, on North Eagleville Road, but we weren't able to collect any on King Hill Road.
Is there anybody gonna use King Hill to cut through? I mean, there's no place to park anymore over there, right?
Right. And it was closed for a pretty long time. So your principle is just to avoid the inters, really it's just to avoid the intersection at North Eagleville and Discovery Drive.
I'm just wondering, was, if this is constructed and with a new building constructed, is anybody?
Yes. They're going to go in, they're going to use this as a cut through to get to the garage on campus, I think, yeah.
Possibly.
I would.
Would or will?
I don't know, maybe. I don't go to that garage very often. And if my husband stops walking to work, he, he may use that.
Well, thank you for the response.
And Commonet basically addressed the same same issue. Or Common Nine study indicated 48-hour traffic count speed was performed. And did we use the 85th percentile speed? And I think Christian just answered that we did on King Hill, but none, we didn't have data on. Or we did on Eagleville, but not on King Hill. Well, number 10 was about our analysis and the synchro analysis that we included. And we addressed that comment and sent him the updated analysis. So those are all the comments, traffic related comments from the from the Western Sampson's peer reviewer.
Can this, could you show us sidewalks? Just because this group sometimes talks about complete streets, right? So right now on the south side. Can you just kind of?
Yeah. What? On the south side, the King Hill side?
Yep.
Okay. Tim, you want to jump in and talk about sidewalks here?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, on the south side of Site A, you can see our sidewalk. You have a stub connection on the right side of the plan for potential continuation in front of Ted's parcel over there. Currently, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street. We continue the sidewalk along the extent of our property until you get into the upper parking garage connection. Sorry, still on King Hill. Yeah, there you go. And we turn up and meet the building at that point to cross that driveway connection. As we're seeing on the grading plans, the topography does get very steep there and the western butter, which is Yukon on property, also has the steep slopes in there. So to provide the additional sidewalk connection stub over there would be cutting into a steep wooded slope. So we chose to end the sidewalk. Providing about, you know, let's say about 85% of the length of the frontage along that property there. And then on the northern side of the property, we are providing for replacing the existing asphalt connection on the upper right-hand corner. You'll see if lush curb to an ADA ramp up there and we cross again over our driveway connection, the crosswalk, we provided a stub along the right-of-way. If there was potential future connection, you'll notice that we did not extend along the entire frontage of the property. And this is because of the open channel port in the Eagleville Brook. Along that curb line on the southern extent of South Eagleville Road. It's a very steep and armored slope that leads directly down into the water course and flood zone. Be very difficult to construct a sidewalk along there. There's a guide rail, utility poles, monitoring station, curb leak off for stormwater within the right-of-way. And on the northern side of North Eagleville Road, there's actually an existing sidewalk that runs the length of North Eagleville Road. So pedestrians can navigate North Eagleville Road to the west along the northern side of the right-of-way there. Yeah, and you can, you can see we've, we've got the connection across La Doi in the bottom right-hand corner there with the crosswalk up to the sidewalk along the entire face of the Site B frontage. And then we are reconfiguring and reconnecting to that existing asphalt sidewalk in the bottom left-hand corner along the frontage down to the bottom there, Christian. Yeah, right there. So you'll see right where that match existing asphalt sidewalk. That's where the continuation along the northern face of North Eagleville Road connects to the existing asphalt walk. And if you could switch back to Site A for a second here. The other sidewalks that are on site, we have a through connection along the eastern side of the property. Which runs between North Eagleville and King Hill Road. Connecting both of the right-of-ways, there's a stair connection and up to the, the other sidewalks on either side. Connection through there. And that's about it. If you have any other questions, I can answer. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't miss one. We do have crosswalk connection along King Hill Road to the existing bus stop on the south side of King Hill Road. Provide access to that as well.
Is there any type, any type of illumination of that crosswalk? That'll occur?
I believe there's, there are existing lights along King Hill Road. I'll have to look that one up. Sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we do have lighting.
You see, there's a light, there's a street light on the existing conditions just to the left.
But curious that, yeah, that may be just the utility pole. Let me, I can pull up the street view, but I know it was under construction at the time of the street view images there. I should bear with me one second.
Is there any exterior lighting of that building of that sidewalk in front, for example, or?
Yes, there is. And we can pull up our lighting plan as well. Check the street view quickly. There are streetlights along King Hill. So yes, they will all be eliminated.
Okay. Thank you. Then I know. Know there's been a strong interest of some sort of crosswalk across North Eagleville. Has that had any, have you had any discussion with the university or DOT concerning that?
We've been coordinating with Yukon. There is an existing connection up at the Discovery Drive intersection to the right of the site, a few hundred feet up the road. At this point, the intention is for people to cross there and make their way back down to the other site.
I mean, historically, I know that university, they've always, students have always there to either access Ted's or either a significant issue. And now that there's additional retail and restaurants, et cetera.
Yeah.
Definitely has.
And they, I know in this scenario, mid-block crossing wouldn't be ideal. We did provide that stub along the right-of-way that you can see there approaching the open portion Eagleville Brook. If there were a, a need for a future connection, it could tie into that location over there. The grades would be ADA compliant. We did not include that in our, our application here.
And sightlines would be sufficient if that was to be the location?
We haven't fully looked into the sightlines. I do know that that is a relatively clear portion with vegetation and the topography challenges occur To the west of the channel portion and to the south towards our site, so I wouldn't expect there to be a a large issue with those.
Is there retail on both sides?
Yes.
Yes, retail and housing on both sides.
They're gonna cross anyways and then to one side. Yeah. If it's students, they always take the path of least resistance quicker. Cause all we chat.
They'll assume they're on campus, even though this is technically off campus. Tree violation on campus and they cross.
Yeah, because it it's really not that big of a deal, even if they had to go here.
Um, so. The sidewalk on, um. On the south side, it it just begins, so we had talked about the possibility of extending that to the west. But not, not along the Brookside, but within the. Your property, like they did, we we discussed what they had done over at the standard. They kind of brought that in onto private property, but allowed it. It, have you looked into that?
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my computer here, but, uh, there's some significant challenges with that related to photography grading and. Uh, vegetation, tree. Uh, tree coverage, uh, Christian, I don't know if you have the grading plan up, if not, I can try and steal here.
Yeah, I don't have it up. Do you wanna share your screen?
Yeah.
Kind of facility. Between the sidewalk to discourage.
Right, so, and and sorry, I couldn't quite hear that question.
That's okay. Yeah, no problem. Um, is there, are there any opportunities for facilities to be placed between the sidewalk and the roadway to decrease the? You know, or increase the friction to create that, to do that mid block crossing in lieu of. Creating a mid block crossing. This way you kind of are encouraging or forcing those individuals move towards Discovery Drive.
Then the university do that farther down.
Right.
North Eagleville.
Yeah, and that's, and that's actually what we were. Intending with this extension that you can see here with the sidewalk, you'll see that we've kept it at the. Grade of the adjacent roadway here, so that grades could be manipulated to provide. An ADA compliant crossing with whatever type of infrastructure that's needed, whether it be rapid flashing beacons or some other type of signage there. That could be accommodated in the future.
I guess that's what I was kind of getting to, is there an opportunity where you do the inverse of that and you don't bring it down? And keep it as a, keep that resistance there, so it's not a.
Right, instead of sending someone to, uh, to no man's land over here, just end the sidewalk. Kind of where we have our.
Awesome, either scenario, it's just a question of is there a way to. Discourage crossing there at the mid block and encourage or kind of force the issue to bring them to Discovery Drive, is there a way to? Physically block, discourage, what could be used, is there any opportunity for screening for, you name it, I'm just. You know, cause I know the university had went from basically a sidewalk against the curb line. To incorporating low. Uh, landscaping and other facilities to discourage those crossings and get the students to move to the mid blocker to a an adjacent. Uh, intersection.
You're talking about further east. On on from.
Yes.
Yes, from one ninety five to where, um.
Discovery Drive.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really great example of how that has helped the pedestrian traffic, because that's a huge area for. I mean, there's just a lot of people moving from on along there, and there's gonna be a lot more.
Yeah, no, that's that's certainly something we could look into putting, you know, allowing plantings that you wouldn't necessarily wanna walk over and. We could remove this section of sidewalk here, that's, uh, more amenable.
I mean, I think might be, it may be the preference if there's some sort of. Method you're employing to discourage that mid block crossing, or alternatively, you provide the mid block crossing, one or the other. Yeah. Good point. Either have to address it, have a mid block crossing, or you have to highly discourage it.
Those, those. Is, what's going on here with that? Is that a?
Those are the pipes.
Okay.
No, those are the, actually the underground pipes that basically carry the North Eagleville broke through campus.
So there'll be no. Sidewalk on that side.
That's one option, was to eliminate the sidewalk in that corridor to discourage those residences from crossing. At that area, but it just moves the crossing to in between Ted's. In this new project and across the street to La Doi.
But how are they gonna get, how are people gonna get to their retail?
I think it's mostly internal anyways, I I don't, I'm. I don't even see how they're doing it right now.
That's something I'm concerned about.
Kids are gonna cross, we're gonna cross.
I don't care what.
Where's the engine?
Put up a sign. I believe it's those triangles, can you explain how somebody would enter from North Eagleville if they're a pedestrian to get into the retail facilities?
So for. Pedestrian connection over to site A, they would be. Following an existing pedestrian route that comes through here. Again, up the ADA ramp flush curbing across. The crosswalk that we're providing, and you'll see that we have two.
Okay, there it is.
Connections here, and sorry, my mouse is. Not sure what's going on in my software, but here and here, those two yellow connections, we've got. Uh, different options, one is mainly intended for the access to the proposed restaurant use, and then the retail uses. To the right here, be used by this and sidewalk.
What about, what about sidewalk in front of the manhole seven there, is there any kind of pedestrian facility there? Where you're a leader from manhole seven past the triangle? Okay, that's all the first area, okay, thank you.
Yep.
You're real soon, even if you put in some sort of resistance, you're still gonna have it, they're just gonna go from the driveway across the street.
Yeah, that would be my, uh, I think you're gonna have to look at. That that crossing near the driveway. Mid block is probably. Cause you're not, you're not gonna get college students or for that matter, old ladies to go all the way down and then circle back and come down, they're they're gonna go across the street.
Well, thank you for the explanation, really appreciate it. Jennifer, what are you seeking?
Looking to them. Yeah, put that in.
Yeah.
I mean.
Are you looking for emotion, are you looking for some comments from?
I think comments, I just feedback, um, you know. Comments to provide to Weston and Sampson or comments for these folks to address.
Yeah.
Um, concerns.
My biggest comment, which has nothing to do with this more, what we learned from the Oaks is. There's gonna be more cars than parking. I don't know what. It's, cause anybody who's gonna live here is gonna have a car in most cases, eighty percent of them, and it's probably not parking for eighty percent, I don't believe, so.
And they can have.
They haven't sold, let me put it this way, they haven't sold the garages, sells out the garages at Yukon yet.
No, but you can have all the signs you want to say this is designated for. Customer parking, but. We all know, because we deal with it here, that that's not.
It's gotta be enforced.
Yeah, but so if if I had to guess, uh. Probably what's his name will probably end up taking over their garage anyways.
This is.
Last, we'll probably have taken over the garage and just making that a complete no, so, but that's.
So I think management, um.
Yeah, parking management is probably a large.
Enforcement, it's gonna be something that you're gonna really need to.
Absolutely.
Think about.
So I think I heard, so parking management.
Yeah, in the midway.
Mid block crossing.
Yep.
And we concur with the.
Yep.
Recommendation.
Absolutely.
Relocation of the driveway, uh, on King Hill Road.
And just really understanding. The volume of pedestrians and how they move along.
Between the two sites, real, cause you're gonna have.
Between the two sites and also coming from the east and west, I mean, it's just, it's a lot of. People, you know, come out here in two weeks and you're gonna see a lot of people moving.
Yep. No, it's great to see a great sidewalk right in front of the safety complex, I thought that was a big improvement to what's there today, and it's a lot wider.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's a huge benefit.
Mm hmm.
All right.
So it doesn't need to be a motion that we vote on.
You don't need a motion, I mean, I think it's just comments.
Go ahead, Derek.
No, I think we just summarized them. Are you all such?
Any questions of us on this project?
I know.
All right, well. We'll move on to the next item then, if we know somebody you're staying on for that.
I'll be staying on for that, yep.
I'll just.
I'm gonna jump off, thanks guys, those are fair comments, we will address them.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You know.
Yeah.
W R I T H G.
All right, so next on new business is four ninety seven middle turnpike. Osta approval. Jennifer, will you start?
Well, I'm gonna just let that these folks, um, kinda introduce the subject and, um, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, um. Do we have a site plan? Anything that we can put up? So four ninety seven, uh, that's on, um.
I'm working on getting it now, sorry, my, uh, Peter's not agreeing with me this morning.
So we, we've been in front of planning board, uh, with this now, uh, we'll be back. Except in September, uh, forget the exact date.
Public hearings closed.
But yeah, the public hearings closed and we'll be back for.
A decision on.
We, we have, Osta has looked at this. Uh, we have addressed their comments. Um, they have validated our. Uh. Methodology, traffic volumes, et cetera, uh. We are proposing. A pedestrian crossing at that location. Um, I was come on late to this project, but I know. From the history that the the planning board had at one time suggested it, we showed it and were. You know. The mid block crossing there, um, that would be, um. Signed and have flashing. Uh, beacons at that location because of it is a mid block. Um, we're pursuing it based on that. The interest, uh, the state has asked us for more information on that, and that particular crossing will be. Designed in detail once. The project is approved by the town and. We move into the encouragement permit process. Um, but at this point, the state is, they they've asked us for more information and that's it. Um. The site, we've gone through the peer review, addressed all the comments. Um. And the, uh, site from an access standpoint, the main access is on middle turnpike. And there is an emergency access in the rear. Uh, gravel, I think, Tim, sixteen feet wide, uh, off of Cedar Swamp Road. Gated on two ends. Um, I know the, Tim, uh, and the planning board were out there a couple of weeks ago. Walking it, and we've made, addressed the comments, their comments on that, uh, to date. Um. But essentially, you know, we've. Gone through the process, addressed all the comments and. You know, are moving forward with the Osta process, uh, subject to town approval.
So what type of information was Osta seeking at the mid block crossing?
They wanted to know, um, signage.
Lineage.
Advanced signage, things like that.
Yeah, cause I mean, I would say we had a pretty large concern in the gen, in the letter that was provided dated June twelfth, twenty twenty three, under the complete streets component.
Mm hmm.
Um. We. Pretty much disagree with ninety percent of that paragraph, um, we disagree that it's not gonna have pedestrian and cyclists. Utilizing it. Um, especially in light of taking a parking credit for. Bicyclists and bicycle, um, uh, parking. So I guess that was our, really our concern was that it seemed kind of disingenuous to indicate that and then take a credit for it.
Yeah, I mean, you said you referenced the January.
And parking reduction.
June twelve, twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
They're not taking it.
Right. Okay.
So.
Okay.
Page three of four.
That was one of the comments, so they're not taking the parking reduction as a result of that, because. One of the comments from the peer reviewers is if they got that, um, that crossing. To allow for more green space within, um, the development, they should take that parking reduction. They they choose not to because.
We have an older version, we don't have the July ten.
Oh, there's a new one.
Right, we have.
No, that was, it was. It's a different document. I think this was the letter administrative decision request dated to Osta. From Langen.
Yeah, I'm not, uh. Can you just rephrase the question, I mean, if we're not taking it?
Yeah, oh, I just think it was, the way it was structured, it basically says that there was, we're not anticipating any kind of pedestrians or cyclists, and that there's no ability. For them to travel, and then in the second half of the, you know, in the second half of the paragraph, it says, oh, but there's a, there's a sidewalk in a multi-use path across the street. And a bus stop. But.
So.
Don't anticipate.
Yeah.
A lot of usage. I I hate to tell you, they're gonna get a lot of usage.
Yeah, I think they.
So, but, so the issue here is, Derek, is that.
Yep.
When they're, they submitted this administrative decision request for Osta. And are you saying that they, you're recommending that they edit that so that?
I would just think we would pre.
The second and fourth sentence are kinda wrong.
Yeah, and I think if you started the sentence, there exists, just from there exists a public transportation bus stop five hundred feet.
Yes.
A- a- and everything else, because there, there is gonna be.
Oh, a student living there, cause my daughter lived in clubhouse.
Yep.
And she could park, or you can't park anymore, or Farmer Brown's area, so now a student. That lives here is probably gonna take the bus or walk, cause. They're gonna end up on Discovery Drive, it'll be a little closer, but that must, it's almost like defeats the purpose of driving. I, well, it'd be interesting to see what they do.
Yep. So I.
We all students.
I saw you're saying that.
I think if any kind of concurrence, we'd have to caveat that we. Believe there's a higher traffic, I think it's gonna kind of bolster their. Ask and their information for the mid block crossing, it's just that we do anticipate pedestrian crossing, we do anticipate. Bicycle cyclists to utilize the public facilities.
We have them.
That.
They'll use trail right across the street, which they're gonna hop on to get to school.
We really, really want that crosswalk.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's the, that's the gist of this, is that.
Scary part is it's on forty four where people are doing a lot faster.
They go forty five plus.
Fifty, I would say, sometimes.
Sixty. As part of the design, we've talked about this internally, as part of the design of this, we we haven't gotten to it at this point, because, you know. We weren't sure whether it was gonna happen or not, but if, as we go forward in the design, one of the things we're gonna look at is. Speed, uh, to the west and how to. You know, we had talked about putting up a speed sign, uh, radar sign, uh, on Cedar Swamp, because some of the people were. Concerned about that. Um. I think it'd be more effective, especially with a pedestrian crossing, if we had that. Farther down, uh. Forty, uh, middle turnpike. Approaching the site first, you know, to try to get speeds down, you know. And in anticipation, and obviously there'll be an advanced. Uh, signage for the crosswalk, uh, actuated signage, so. Understanding that that the speeds here, we we did measure, measure speed here, and it was, I think the eighty fifth was forty nine miles an hour, so. Volumes are low, but, and that's one of the reasons the speed is higher.
I'm also concerned it's location between two roads, and when you. You're driving, if I'm on birch and I'm approaching forty four. And I wanna go take a right turn, I'm looking to the left, I'm not looking, I turn, and then somebody's in the. The crosswalk that I didn't expect, cause I, in the same coming off. See the other way, the chance of them taking a right out of there, more left out of that road, uh, Cedar Swamp, but. Just some concern putting the mid block. Mid inner, you know, cause, cause we don't have a T intersection there, that's the. There's some potential danger there, I think. And I don't know how you fix it other than. Going to the west side of Birch, but then there's no, then you gotta cross Birch.
You're adding two across, yeah.
It's just a concern that people don't. They look, nobody's coming, they roll through the stop sign or, you know. The person who doesn't follow the rules, which I know we can't assume that.
That's, that's a hard one, yeah.
Yeah, just.
So, uh, this. You, right now, we're, you know, the public hearing has been closed for this project, and you're, so. I think what we're looking for is to support the sidewalk. We want Osta to approve that.
Yes.
And that's why we're here today.
Whatever we need to make it so they approve it.
Right.
You know, we don't like those two sentences.
Yeah, that is, it's going to make us to think, oh, we're, we're not going to put that in. We shouldn't put that in.
Yeah, I mean, there is no sidewalk on Cedar Swamp, but there is a multi-use trail on Middle Turnpike. It's on the other side of Middle Turnpike, but it's on. So to say no sidewalk exists on that, on the turnpike is kind of wrong, right?
Yeah, I think we just, I think they're seeking concurrence, because Osta's already received it. Right. So I think our concurrence has to be, you know, from the original request.
Cause it's going to increase.
A bit.
We hope.
So we just.
We hope more students will walk and bike than drive.
Exactly. We want people to easily access that multi-use trail.
Yes.
So I think, I think we just have to submit that letter. It's really on our behalf, but I think that's a.
We urge.
Yeah.
Them to approve us.
Yep. So we concur with the traffic analysis, what we do.
So we don't need a motion, we just need a concurrence. We all concur.
Yep. Okay.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions of us?
No, I don't.
I, I know.
Yeah, I, I just had one quick question. Is there any chance that, so, you know, what I'm understanding is you guys are concurring with our, you know, our assessment of no impact to the state road. Would we be able to get that in a letter in writing? Because that's, that's, at the end of the day, what Osta requires for us to submit. From you guys, or I don't know if you guys were just planning on submitting that straight to them, because that, that, that works as well.
Last time we said it, straight to them.
Well, so many CCU, you know.
Yeah. Great. We do indicate that there would be an impact to the state road on a pedestrian cyclist's perspective.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks all.
Have a good day.
You too.
And next on the agenda is future meetings. Is nine, September twenty-seventh, the next meeting. Any other discussion?
Yeah, get me off the camera, please. You look good. I look good every day, but it doesn't.
I know, I'm just like.
On my mind, it doesn't look great.
You have hair. Stop.
All right, so do you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all favor, all right, four to zero, return. Thank you for coming.